This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Let us call this meeting to order. Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, welcome.
Cindy?
Yes?
I see an option to record, so should I press it?
Yeah, where are you seeing that?
I'm going to the three buttons at the bottom of the screen, clicking on that, and it says manage recording. So I can start recording. I just wanted to announce it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
So, I had a feeling there was one, but I'm still getting used to this new system, so that's good. All right, so Megan, do we have any correspondence?
We have a few correspondence to report from the past couple of weeks. We have three community members who have emailed us about, after the joint convention with the city council and school committee, looking to replace those two members. So three community members have emailed us in regards to which of the nine candidates they would like us to support. We received an email from Concerned Parent about class sizes in the fifth grade, which is ongoing sort of discussion, it looks like. And is not sort of resolved, but is an ongoing question. We received an email from a community member who had some opinion to weigh in on one of the interim candidates, telling us which they supported and which they did not. We had also one email requesting, and following up on that English language learning program, requesting a meeting, and kind of just keeping it on our plates for, you know, when the agenda will allow for it.
Okay. It's Mackenzie here. For a student update. I didn't see. I don't see. Make sure. I don't think so. Let me just scroll through. Yep. Okay, Mackenzie's not here. I'm gonna make sure. Yep. Okay. All right. So then we are going to open up public speak. We're going to have 15 minutes of public speak. And I'm going to ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. And please signal that you want to speak, but also state who you are. So I'm gonna get a timer going. I'm ready. Okay, so we have Michelle Downer, and we have Sean Chan. So let's do Michelle, and then we'll do Sean.
Oop. Hold on a second. Michelle... Disappeared. Michelle, can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right. My name is Michelle Downer. I live in East Hampton. I also work at MVS. I have some questions. I don't know if you can answer them for me, and I also have an opinion about the RBTs that were hired at Mountain View School. I did reach out when some parents had some concerns and questions about them, but no one ever got back to me. I know a little bit about the program and what the people that at MVS have to do in order to get that job. And I just wish going forward that maybe like that had been offered to the parent educators at MVS, because we are a very strong unit. We're struggling. There's a lot of things going on. But it would have made us a stronger unit of people if we had been offered that training. Because those RBs, those RBTs are making between $50 and $55 an hour, and I feel like they're doing our job. And again, I reached out to try to get some information about the employees that are there, and no one ever got back to me.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so then Sean?
Okay, can you hear me? I'm in a remote location.
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. So I'm here today to talk to you about our parent educators. The group that is the lowest paid, but the group that many of the students and staff rely on to keep our schools running smoothly. Many of our parent educators have years of experience. In fact, one has been in the district since October 1987, and I was in junior high school back then. These parent educators come to work not for the pay from the $18 to $20 an hour that they earn, but because they enjoy working and helping our students. Our people can do this job because they have ABA training with the May Institute. This is why I find it insulting that the district contracted out parent educator jobs for registered behavioral technicians with the field center. The district has paid $24,000 to three behavioral technicians that are making $55 an hour and to a supervisor. No negotiations or communications were made with the union, which violates our recognition clause. The union is demanding that East Hampton Public Schools stop using contracted staff to work with students in violation of the contract it has with educators. The district's attempt to privatize the city's education force is not in the best interest of our students. Our evolving staff is not conducive to creating a comfortable, supportive, and nurturing learning environment. Bringing in contracted workers at a much higher pay rates than those offered to full-time staff is damaging to morale and a blatant attempt to bust our union. The district needs to demonstrate more respect for East Hampton students and educators. And also because we are remote, people are having some issues with the technology. So you're going to be hearing much more from us in letters to the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jane, and then Kira.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. I wanted to thank the committee for all the work that you're doing. I know that you've been under attack recently. And I realize that you're volunteers, and I just want to thank you for the time that you have spent. My father was on the Board of Education in the town in which we grew up, and I know what it's like to be the subject of that. I appreciate the integrity with which you're approaching the whole situation. And this is not a slam on the members who have left, because they believe in their position too, but I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, and especially to the chair. Initially, I was very critical of you, and I feel like I owe you an apology. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. Okay, Kira?
Hi, my name's Kira Henninger. I'm a parent of two fourth graders at Mountain View School. I just wanted to encourage parents on this call and also in the community to go to the meet and greets with the potential candidates for the interim superintendent. I've gone the last two days, and I've been a total of three people from parents or community. And I feel like watching the interviews is a really important part of it, but I feel like having the one-to-one conversation gives you a lot more to go off of, and it's just a different experience. So I know schedules are tight, especially this time of year, things are busy. But I hope to see more people over the next couple of days, because I think it's really important for our community in this decision that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Give it a minute? Thirty seconds. Anybody want to speak? I'm just about to close public speak. All right, seeing none. I'm going to close public speak, and we'll go on. Thank you. Okay, now for our superintendent update.
Thank you. We have a few. We have one presentation tonight, and that's going to be the NESDEC enrollment study. And we also had another presentation slated, the access score data presentation. We promised you we will bring the scores back to you for how the students did on the access test. Julianne has prepared a PowerPoint, and she is out sick unfortunately. So we'll move that one to the next meeting. But for the enrollment study, I just wanted to give a little context about what this is and why we did it. Back in late winter, we were observing some of the projects that were being slated for development in East Hampton. And I met with the mayor and with Jeff Bag, and the mayor graciously said that we could fund a study because we wanted to make sure that as a community, we were keeping our options open for being able to appropriately house all the students that we had in the district. We wanted to make sure that overcrowding would not be a problem going forward in the future. So we wanted to have the information as much as we can. You know, there's some element of looking into a crystal ball with this. But I appreciate the mayor funding this study. I think it benefits the entire community. It's beneficial to the planning department. It's good, solid information for us to have on the school committee and for administration and for the building committee as well. So we contracted with a firm called NESDEC, and Karen Ladue is here tonight. She was the consultant that was the primary driver on this study. And I'm going to turn it over to Karen and welcome her. She has a presentation, so hopefully she can get the rights to show that. And then if you all have questions afterwards, we can entertain your questions. So Karen, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Mayor LaChapelle, Dr. Leclerc, the school committee, and the East Hampton community members who are on the call. So I wanted to share my screen, so I'll actually show you the presentation, and I'll go through the whole presentation, and certainly if it's appropriate, can answer any questions. So the NESDEC team comprises all former central office leadership teams. So we have an acute understanding of what it's like to be in the schools and what has to happen in order to assure quality education for the East Hampton students. And you can see Chris Malone was the consultant who worked with me on this project. And then we have others who are all listed here, including Dr. Betancourt, who is our executive director. NESDEC's been around for over 75 years, and our purpose is to assist high-performing districts in becoming the best educational institutions they can be. NESDEC was asked to prepare enrollment projections and to identify demographic factors, which I'll go over with you in just a minute. We work with over 250 districts across the six New England states and have experience with urban, suburban, and rural communities. So for this project, NESDEC analyzes the U.S. Census Bureau for Population Trends and Birth Rates. We looked at real estate sales through interviewing some of your local realtors and the Warren Group. We looked at the Massachusetts Department of Education. We worked with the city planner and the building department. And the report that you'll see talks about those trends in population and data. We'll provide 10 years of historical enrollment data, 10 years of an enrollment projection report, plus an analysis of any expected student yield from any proposed residential construction. And I'll spend some time talking about that. So the demographic information is important to look at because it reflects the population. We go from big to small. And you can see the population trends throughout the United States is still declining. But then it's important to look at the six New England states in relation to the United States. And I think important to hear is that in Massachusetts, there are declines. The percent of change between 2021 and 2030 are projected to be minus 4.5%, lower than the other six New England states. Important to consider here is the population of East Hampton. You can see since 1990 to 2020, especially from 2000 to 2020, you're hovering around the 16,000 residents here. So that that population has steadily increased over the past three years and has almost stabilized. The median age of the population is a very important factor when looking at demographics and what's going to happen next. So you can see here, we look at the United States, Massachusetts, Hampshire County, and East Hampton from 2000 to the 2020 estimate. And we'll go right to East Hampton. You can look at the other data later. But in 2000, the average median age was 38.6, rose to 43, and then the estimate is 46.5. So the population of East Hampton is aging at a faster rate than the United States, Massachusetts, and Hampshire County. That could have an impact on school-aged children as the population ages. So we actually look more carefully at school-aged children, because that's what our main focus is here. And the 2020 U.S. Census does break that out. And here you say, you can see that 11.7% of the total population is school-aged, ages five to 19 years. And you can see it's broken out to sort of early elementary, the mid-years, and then the high school years. And in the, you know, 3.2% for early elementary and rising to four and then 4.5. Important to think about, though, is that under five years is a 4.1% of the population. Also note is the K-12 students per household unit. And here you can see, we looked at the Commonwealth of Massachusetts over the past 30 years. We looked at East Hampton over the past 30 years. The occupied housing units, the pre-K, the public K-12 enrollment, and then the K-12 students per household. Again, here, it's declining. In 1990, there were 31% of the K-12 students who were in the households, and it has dipped to 19%. It's lower than what we see in Massachusetts, which is 33%, with East Hampton at 19%. Births are important because these students who are born today become future students in the East Hampton Public Schools. And between 2007 and 2017, East Hampton births averaged about 145 per year. From 2018, it was 116. So you can see the declines over the past 10 years come because some of these births have impacted the kindergarten enrollments, which impact K-12. And then the provisional and estimated births, which is what we use to do the projections, ranged between 112 to 118. So it's important to just consider this data, because it tells you who are the future students for East Hampton. One point I wanted to bring out, and I'll show this in a separate slide. East Hampton typically enrolls fewer kindergartners than births recorded. And that's something maybe the district would look at. So here are the East Hampton births, and you can see the variability over these years from a high of 168 births in 2008, and those were kindergartners, and 2013 to 112 for 2022. That's your future kindergarten class. And it's important when you're looking at demographics and also to think about future citizens and residents of East Hampton to look at the trends in real estate sales. What we do notice is that while some of the mature buyers were downsizing, lately we've seen a stoppage in that. And you may find that in East Hampton. We, you know, don't have any data about that for East Hampton itself. But the fact that there is a rise in the interest rates has strongly influenced the number of new families that move to the district. So there are some families who are thinking of coming but have postponed moving at all. But important to consider is that real estate sales in our work, we have noticed it's four to five times larger than the building, number of building permits for residential construction. So it can be a more important factor than the number of building permits. We actually used the Warren Group, which is out of Banker and Tradesman, to look at the single-family sales historically for East Hampton. And before the elastic economic downturn in 2008, you were selling 169 single-family homes in a year with an average median sale price of $96,629. Between 2008 to 2012, when there was a recovery, there were 123 units, so, you know, 46 units less. But the average median sales went up a little bit. But you've seen a recovery almost from 2013 to 2022. 146 units per year with an average median sales price of $2,068,700. East Hampton is still affordable for families. So this is just a visual representation of the home and condo sales based on the data from the Warren Group, so you can look at it historically. So we spoke to several area realtors, very helpful in promoting East Hampton. They noted the lack of the inventory of single-family homes. It's not unlike what we're seeing in a lot of districts. The increased interest rates are having an impact on buyers. Buyers are predominantly younger families, but some buyers are mature individuals who are downsizing, which is important, because that considers whether it's a younger family bringing in potential students to be educated or if they're just mature individuals who are thinking about living in your community. And that East Hampton is still considered affordable as compared to some of the surrounding towns. So we thank those realtors for their input. So in order to think about what's next for East Hampton, given the increased residential construction, NESDEC reviewed information submitted by Mr. Jeff Bag, the city planner, to determine the impact to the enrollment from any residential construction. And we grouped it into three buckets. Approved projects currently under construction, approved projects not currently under construction, and projects in the approval pipeline. The projected student yield is calculated for approved projects currently under construction only. The potential student yield is calculated for approved projects not currently under construction and projects in the approval pipeline, as our experience has shown that sometimes these projects are not built, they're delayed, they're modified, there are things that can happen. So you're going to see some of the potential residential projects listed here, but only the ones that are projected will be included, excuse me, in the enrollment forecast that we will provide. So some factors to consider. The number of bedrooms per unit makes a difference. Intuitively, we know a one-bedroom unit does not have any impact on student enrollment. Two-bedroom units have minimal impact, because they're usually bought by one adult, two adults, and using one of the other bedrooms as a home office, especially given the way situations have shifted. Three-bedroom units will have an impact on student enrollment, as they're typically purchased by families with children. The density of the area, close to highway, industrial areas, the fewer the children, and the housing costs. The higher the rent or mortgage, the less likely the unit will have school-aged children. Our past experience indicates that approximately 70% of the potential student yield could be elementary school-aged children, 20% middle school, and 10% high school. Because once a family moves to an area, they usually stay until the student graduates from high school. So if they're going to move, they're going to move during the elementary, mostly during the K to two time. But we have seen some trends where it's grades three through five, too. So information gained from Mr. Bag. So there are two projects that are currently unapproved and under construction. One is Cottage Square, and it lists the number of units there, one bedroom and how many two-bedrooms. And Steplar Crossing, there are 13 two-bedrooms and four three-bedroom units. So the projected student yield, the impact to the enrollment, based on what I had just said, there's only four three-bedroom units, is going to be smaller. And so we broke it out to the 70%, 20%, and 10%, and you could see the breakout there. K to five, four to six students, grades six to eight, one to two students, and grades nine through 12, one student. Now next, we're going to look at approved projects not currently under construction. And remember, we calculate the potential student yield, the impact to student enrollment, and it's not going to be included in the enrollment forecast, but it gives you sort of a basis for what could happen, knowing that this project could change, some things could happen. One Ferry Street, there are two completed buildings currently, and you can see the configuration of what has been built. Building seven and building nine have not been built, as the construction timeline has slowed. And the proposed 2026 to 2028 completion, that's important to consider when you're thinking about any potential student yield. If this goes forward, the number of bedrooms per unit for both of these buildings was unknown at the time of our analysis. So the potential student yield is based on an approximated range of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And we used building five as the model. How many of building five were one-bedroom? What was the percentage of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom? That's how we calculated the potential student yield. So you can see at the bottom, grades K to five, 20 to 24 students, grades six to eight, six to eight students, and grades nine through 12, two to three students. We recognize that your building is K to eight. But it's important to break out into those grades spans so that you have a clearer understanding of what the impact to the school should be, given that class sizes are something that under the purview of the district and the school committee. Projects in the approval pipeline. Again, we're doing a potential student yield, impact to student enrollment with the caveat that this might change. But here at Sierra Vista Commons, there are 10 one-bedroom units, 52 bedroom units, and 123 bedroom units. The construction timeline, proposed 2026, 2027, 2028. And because of the number of three-bedroom units here, you're going to see down at the bottom here, there is going to be an impact to, I'm sorry, has that been there the whole time, to the potential student yield. Another project in the approval pipeline is 385 Main Street. And you can see 23 one-bedroom, 42 two-bedroom, 18 three-bedroom, and seven studio units. And all units are designated as affordable. So the potential student yield, the impact to enrollment, you can see listed at the bottom. And then the reuse of the Maple Center and Pepin School. Maple, you can see the configuration. There are 11 three-bedroom units, so you can see the potential student yield there. Center, there are nine one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, one three-bedroom units. The student yield here is minimal. And then for Pepin, you can see the configuration, the potential student yield for that. Pepin School reuse would be two to three K to 12 students. So we broke it out, and you could see the impact, the potential student yield, the impact to the enrollment there. So we just summarized that information here. And here's the residential project, the construction timeline, the number of units, if they're 40B. 40B does have some impact, because you could see families moving in because it becomes even more affordable. And then the enrollment impact is here. So you could see, these are projects currently under the construction. These are the only ones that you'll see in the enrollment forecast. And here's the project not currently under construction, and then projects in the approval pipeline. And it's unknown here, because this is a moving target. And I know the municipal side of government with Mayor LaChapelle and Mr. Bag are working to go through these projects and get a timeline. So we had asked City Planner Bag to, what are some local and regional factors which may accelerate future residential growth? And I think it's important to notice that the 40R Smart Growth Zoning District and the permitting requirements for multi-development projects with affordable units is something under consideration, and the list of projects and permits issued for new single-family dwellings, the maximum development of units. This is not unlike what's happening in many, many communities across the state of Massachusetts. Some communities are impacted because of the MBTA requirements. Some are just trying to make sure that every resident can have a home that suits them. And then here are the residential building permits as reported by Hall... And then here are the residential building permits as reported by Housing and Urban Development. And you can see over here, not all of them have been recorded necessarily, they could be. But you can see the trends over the past four years, how things have shifted, and it's something to just keep in, in consideration. And then East Hampton is um, centrally located, two prime transportation routes, um, numerous opportunities for higher education and numerous recreation areas, which makes it a desirable place to live. And important to consider is the housing details. The owner occupied, which is here from nineteen ninety to twenty-twenty, which has not been released. But you can see it's about sixty to sixty-two percent of the population is owner occupied. Here's renter occupied. It's between thirty-seven point nine and forty percent. And that's important to consider because a renter occupied building sometimes has a more fluent um, uh, residence. Where owner occupied, you know that they're going to stay. So here are the enrollment projections. NESTC uses a modified cohort component survival technique to prepare our enrollment forecasts. We take into consideration student migration in and out of schools, to and from private schools, and school choice enrollments both in and out. We look at the stability of grades one through eight. So we track grades one through seven and see how many students transition to grades two through eight. And we find that there are students moving out in those grades to about an average of ten students per year over the past eight years. Interestingly enough, this past school calendar year, you, you increased by fifteen students. So that might be a trend to consider. We look at births as they relate to kindergarten enrollments and then um, the residential multifamily residential building permits. We look at the historical enrollment data by grade over the past ten years to determine what's the reliable percentage of increase and decrease. And we, we calculate ratios between each period of grade or years in schools over several recent years, ten in particular. After we look at the historical ratios, based on the births, migration rates, all of those things, we then choose a ratio most indicative of the future growth patterns for each of those grades. So it could be a three-year ratio, it could be a five-year ratio, it could be a seven-year ratio. It, it, we, we actually look at it and do some um, analyzing about what we see in past trends to look into future years. So those ratios are key factors in the reliability. To note that any um, enrollment projection, the first three years are the most reliable because we actually know those births. Projects, uh, any projections any further out than that are useful to serve as a guide to future enrollments and for planning purposes. So here's the historical enrollment. I want to explain this chart, and we'll, we'll do the same thing for um, the projections. Here's the birth year, the number of births, the school year, and you can see the pre-K to twelve enrollment. So in two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, there were a hundred and thirty-two kindergarteners, and you had a hundred and three twelfth graders.
Karen, is there a way to make that just a little bit bigger?
I certainly can.
Oh, thank you.
Is that, what, I hope I'm not making your eyes go wild. Is that better?
Yeah, one more touch would be great, I think.
You know how, oh, okay.
Yes, much better. No, see, yeah, now you're off the screen, but.
I can move it, I can move it, but you can see here the.
I just think it'll be easier for people to see.
I agree with you, I agree with you. So you can see the cascading effect of a hundred and thirty-two to, and then all the way down um, for the, the students. And then the historical enrollments and grade combinations are, is here. And you can see how that has. It's, it's touchy, excuse me, whoops. You can see how over the past ten years, I'll actually focus over, excuse me, it's touchy. Over here, so the key differences in K twelve. Um, in the year two thousand twelve to two thirteen, there were one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven students. Um, and then in the year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, there were one thousand three hundred and eighty-two, a decrease of eleven percent. So here's just a visual representation of the historical enrollment over those past ten years. And now here's the projected enrollment. And this is where I wanted to show you the um, whoops, excuse me, the births. Um, for the school year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, this was the birth from two thousand and seventeen. You can see that there were a hundred and twenty-five births, and you enrolled a hundred and one students. And so we use that ratio on those projections to look outwardly. I also think it's important to look down here. So for two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, there were six hundred and seventy-three K to five students. If we look three years out, that dips to six hundred and thirteen. So minus sixty students. In grades six through eight, there were three hundred and thirty-nine, three years out of three hundred and thirty-six. You're seeing the decrease in births here have not taken effect in grades six through eight. And three sixty-seven to three ninety-one at the nine through twelve level because the, the higher class numbers are transitioning into grades nine through twelve. And over the next ten years, we're projecting the population of one thousand three hundred and eight, the student enrollment, one thousand three hundred and eighty-two to dip to one thousand two hundred and thirty, again, a decrease of um, eleven percent. And that's just a visual representation. Another way to look at it, the historical and projected, to look at the decline um, over the past um, ten years. And we do it in grade combinations. Um, you can see a slight dip in grades six through eight over the next ten years, um, but a leveling off of K to five and nine through twelve as you get into the outlier years of seven through twelve. And here's the same thing, only with the projection numbers included. And here's the birth to kindergarten relationship that I had mentioned to you, the dark blue line of the births. And there's the K enrollment. So historically, um, you haven't enrolled the number of births into kindergarten. And that's the summit, the additional information, you can look at that at your leisure. So here's the enrollment forecast based on increased residential construction. And it only includes um, the crossing, excuse me, let me find my paper. Uh, Cottage Square and Steplock Crossing. So we looked at the student yield, thus generating this enrollment forecast, which is different from the enrollment projections. The student yield is calculated, as I had said before, of the school-aged children that might occupy hu- um, housing currently under construction. And it's distributed over a three-to-five-year period, especially since those two projects are set to be completed soon. And then of note, the smaller number of the student yield, the more difficult it is to forecast the enrollments. So here it shows a minimal impact to the K to five, six to eight, and nine through twelve over the next couple of years because we're only including six to nine students that are combined from Cottage Square and Steplock Crossing. For reference, you could go back and look at projects not currently under construction and in the approval pipeline to get a sense at, given these estimates. We, this is not um, solidified because we don't know the final uh, project. So important to consider. Over the next three years, East Hampton's K twelve enrollment will decrease by thirty-nine students, as I mentioned in the projected enrollments. Um, the ro- robust real estate market indicates that East Hampton is a viable community for residents. New residential current construction currently under construction will have an, a minimal impact on enrollments. But the improved projects not currently under construction and projects in the approval pipeline, should they be permitted and built as noted, will have an impact on student enrollment, and it refers you back to those slides. So thank you very much. We, NESTC is, is always pleased to work at a community that is thoughtful and thinking about planning next steps for students. So I appreciate your time and certainly can think about um, what is next for the East Hampton Public Schools.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Dr. Leclerc?
So if I could just comment, one of our takeaways from this study is it helps to reassure us that even though, like many communities across the state, our live births are on the decline and our population is aging and we fear or worry about decreased enrollment, if some of these projects that are proposed in the community come to fruition, our district will be able to take on those students, and it will help us keep our numbers at a good level. So we don't feel that we'll be facing overcrowding. We feel that our enrollment will be sustained through new projects. So I think that that helps to bring some value to the conversations that Jeff Bag, the city planner, is having when he talks to um, potential developers.
Thank you. Mayor?
Um, yes, thank you very much, Karen, for the, the presentation. Um, and Dr. Leclerc for recommending your organization. I, I agree with what Dr. Leclerc has, has just said. And when going through the pro, the, this um, project, I, I was, you know, of course, we did this around the timing of new projects. And as Karen mentioned, each one of the projects that's in the pipeline has already changed, uh, at least once or twice. And, and will probably do the same a- again before um, being approved. And I, and I also agree in the report, if approved. We, we have some in the pipeline projects that are really struggling with supply and um, and the cost, making uh, their original timeline to build or what they were going to build um, unattainable. Uh, so there are really, a, a lot of the pipeline ones, we, we're still, we anticipate and are seeing a lot of changes. Um, but again, I, I think that the um, this study has answered a lot of questions um, that we had. And also, for me, pointed out the, the fluidity of, of what impacts will be, you know, past twenty twenty-five, depending on, on what is developed. So thank you very much for the presentation, lots to, to think about. Um, but I feel, I feel in a much better place as far as um, the construction that is happening now and that our schools will, will be able, and our school district um, will be okay.
I just want to thank you for the way it was presented. I think it was really easy to understand. And sometimes big studies can just overwhelm people when you're trying to understand what's going on. So I really like the graphs and the, and the summaries of each section. So thank you for that. I think everybody was able to really get a picture of what you were saying.
Thank you for that feedback.
Anybody else? All right, well, then I thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hearing about next steps.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
And all, uh, I wanted to also mention the access. Um, presentation will move to the next meeting, which is in June. And we have, I just, for my announcements, I just wanted to remind and encourage people. I think as Kira did on this call, that meet and greets for the interim candidates are being held this week. And interviews will be at the beginning of June. And so I hope that the community takes advantage of the opportunities um, to provide feedback. And um, I think that information will be coming out soon regarding um, the meet and greet and the interview for the internal candidate. So be on the lookout for that. So that's all I have for announcements. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, that will be, um, there were some little uh, issues in terms of scheduling the um, the meet and greet, so for the internal candidates. So I'm working on that tonight after this meeting and tomorrow. So everything should be um, in order. So thank you.
Can I also just mention, uh, for the next section, Mr. Burnier is not here this evening. He only presents his finance um, and personnel report once a month, and he did that at the first meeting in May. So um, that is on the agenda mistakenly, so he's not here this evening.
Thank you. Um, do we have uh, finance or policy reports? Maren?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted, we, we have not had a finance subcommittee meeting since our last um, time, but we did have, uh, we did, I, I did attend the City Council Finance Subcommittee Budget Review Meeting last night. Um, there were some questions uh, that were raised in that meeting um, that we have since addressed with the Finance Subcommittee um, and hoping that we are on track to be able to uh, have our budget approved um, and move forward uh, as we address the concerns that were raised. So I think we're in good track for all that. Um, but we are working with them to continue to improve our communication between our different um, sort of bodies, uh, to make sure that we're sort of always staying on the same page together. So it was a good reminder that we need to keep doing that.
Thank you. And Ben?
Nothing's been going on, it's just me right now. Um, I think we decided last time that we were going to wait till we got some new members and.
Correct, correct. And that will be soon. So that's good. All right, this is a very quick meeting. Um, so do we have another? I know Maren had um, one that he wanted to propose.
Yeah, I just, I uh, looking out really further to the end, in the agenda, the next meeting dates. Um, I'm seeing that our next meeting is June thirteenth. Uh, and then we have additional meetings, summer meetings, July eighteenth and twenty-second. Um, what I would like to propose is that out of our sort of process around bringing on a super, a new superintendent, um, that there are some important pieces that we need to put in place before the new school year begins. Um, we, you know, as a part of our conversations around what kind of questions we want to engage that these, the interim superintendents with, and um, they're definitely around, how do we uh, set this person up for success? And set our district up for success with someone who's coming in for just a one-year situation? And that's really around good communication and goals. Um, and uh, sort of good vision of how to track just a single year. Um, and I think that that needs to be done this summer. Um, and we need to have those conversations with the uh, interim superintendent this summer so that we are successful going into the school year. Um, the other piece that did come out, uh, you know, previously at our own meetings, as well as with the um, uh, finance, City Council Finance Committee last night was around um, the interest in having more conversation around our English lan- language learners program. Um, and so we want to make sure that we have time both to have that discussion and presentation um, to us, as well as time for us to make uh, any kind of review and recommendation um, and discuss the implementation potentials uh, for staffing, program changing, and all that kind of stuff um, that could happen out of that uh, discussion. So nothing um, definitive, but we want to make sure that we have the time and space to do that. So for both of those reasons, um, I really think that holding only, you know, two meetings in July and August is really not going to set us up for success, in my opinion. Uh, particularly the fact that August twenty-second is basically the school year started. Um, and so there's no real time to, you know, it, for the in, the interim superintendent at that point needs to be fully focused on professional development, engage of the teachers and the other staff coming into the district. And there's really no time for them to be focused on school committee needs or pre-year programming discussions. And so my recommendation is that we add an additional meeting between that timeline. Um, I guess I didn't even realize that that one wasn't until, I guess I had it as the thirteenth, but I'm, or the eleventh, but I'm hearing that it's, seeing it here now as the eighteenth. So um, I, I don't know what exactly timing is best for everybody. But um, I know we've got our different summer schedules, but I do think we need to schedule a third meeting in there. But um, I know we've got our different summer schedules, but I do think we need to schedule a third meeting in there um, that works for everybody. So that is my request.
So I don't know how um, people are feeling about it, but my sense is if we're going to do an extra meeting, um, we give as much time to the interim as we can in July to um, get their feet wet and feel like they understand what's going on. So if we're going to do that, my suggestion would be um, July thirty-first, which is a Monday. Um, or the second or third of August. If any of those times work, the other time I was thinking of is August eighth. Those are the potentials.
So right, I I just want.
So we have two questions. One is, do you think we need another meeting? And if so, when do we do that?
But I feel I'm, I follow Mearan's line of thinking and agree with it. And in August, we have a meeting on the twenty-second. And then you're proposing the second meeting could be on the eighth of August or the thirty-first of July.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm I'm just one or the other, not both of those dates?
No, just one.
Okay. Just.
Megan?
I just wanted to throw out there, um, it seems in line with the ELL um, discussion. I would like to, I I'm trying to read through the emails that went back and forth between Dr. Leclerc and the community member who emailed about class sizes in the fifth grade. But those numbers do look like they're higher than what we had originally last year talked about wanting to have in the classroom. So can we add that to something we talk about in that additional summer meeting?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
I I don't see why we couldn't talk about that at our next meeting, June thirteenth.
That then. Sooner the better.
To me, that makes more sense.
Okay.
So we'll do class sizes then.
And one of my, I just want to throw out there, one of the reasons why I'm recommending for the additional position again, like maybe there's there's two pieces here. One is, I think we need to have more engagement of the new superintendent, right? Um, and set goals and and have some of those conversations. So that's part of the agenda. The second is, and and this may get to your class size piece, but I think that these conversations for next year need to happen with the new interim superintendent. You know, no offense to Dr. Leclerc, but you know, she has five weeks left. And so any conversations we have at this point, while good for us to have, if it's or if it's not in the presence or being engaging with the new superintendent, then we're going to have to have them again when the superintendent is hired and is in the meeting. So that's my concern with with too many things that are really in review for next school year happening too soon. Um, because we want to make sure that the new superintendent gets this information. Here's our conversation because that's going to be critical for understanding, support, helping them understand what our engagement expectations are for twenty twenty-four. Um, and so that's why I think waiting, particularly on the ELL program, until July is important for that. Um, so, but we can't do everything. We can't, you know, not have anything in the next couple of meetings, but I think those, some of those pieces of information is really important to hold off until that person's been hired and in presence with our new meeting.
Wait a minute. So you're suggesting that we don't talk about class sizes next meeting?
Um, I, you know.
So my sense is that this is an important enough issue that we address this sooner rather than later. That would be my um, my feeling. So I would like it to be on the June thirteenth. I can't see why we would wait. I mean, certainly we have enough people who are interested in finding out what is going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, we can have those conversations. I think that that's, if there's going to be, we're going to just have to have, I mean, if we come out of that situation and we say class sizes have gotten too large, we're going to look to try to change things. That's going to need a follow-up meeting with the new superintendent to implement any of that recommendations. So, you know, it's, I think it's fine for us to have that conversation, you know, in our next meeting. Um, but we just need to recognize and and even the um, ELL program, I mean, that is going to be, you know, there's other programs that um, need to be taken into consideration. You know, we've got ratios of our special education students. We've got ratios of class sizes. There's all those different factors um, need to be a part of that. So we don't have to hold on all of those conversations, but I think that they're gonna that we can gather information and have a preliminary conversation, but then it's going to roll into that uh, July eighteenth meeting in a bigger, bigger way to have a broader conversation at the same time that we're also digging deep with the ELL program.
Um, so, yes.
Oh, I I I don't disagree. Um, a suggestion. If the thirty-first works for everybody, that it's scheduled for the thirty-first to to focus on um, the interim superintendent and goals and conversation. And if if nothing else, um, if there's, that's not uh enough meeting time, maybe put a hold on August eighth.
Um, well, let's start with, let's start with July thirty-first, if that's okay with everybody. I think that's a good place to start. And then um, we see where we go from there. All right. Is that okay? Six o'clock? Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Six P M, July thirty-first.
The Monday.
Yep. All right. Any other other?
Um, I just clarification. So the question around that Megan brought up um, class sizes and whatnot, is that going to happen on June thirteenth then?
I think so, yeah.
And, okay.
So we have, just just to sort of broaden this whole piece. So we have the thirteenth. And in that meeting, for agenda-wise, we're going to have the the postponement of Julianne's Levin's presentation on the student testing. Um, that's going to be very pertinent to our sort of program review. Um, we're going to also be having a conversation about class sizes. So that's going to be a request for Dr. Leclerc to bring some more information together about class sizes and the impact uh, the impacts for next year. Um, and then that's our only meeting in June, correct?
Um, Mearan, can I just interject? We have a large health presentation that night.
Yes.
That's been put off like three or four times because of the superintendent search. So that was, that's the primary driver. Um, that's the primary presentation that night.
Well, I I would say that, that, I mean, yes, that's a presentation, and I agree we need to have that. So that's why I want to talk through the the agenda items. It can't be the, I mean, primary, whatever. It's going to be an important one. I agree. And we're looking forward to hearing about that sort of the that piece. So, but that's going to be one of then of these other pieces. So that's June thirteenth is our only meeting in June. Then we have the meeting on the eighteenth. And that's where we're going to be looking at the ELL program. Also having our first opportunity to to just engage the new superintendent um, and sort of set a little bit of expectations. Followed with that now on the thirty-first um, with goal setting and things like that, conversation with him or her. Um, and then again, we don't meet until the end of August on the twenty-second. So is that the full calendar of those dates?
Mearan, can I just ask um, one consideration? Uh, would you like Julianne to do the access testing results in July when you have the ELL presentation? Does that make sense to put those two together?
So my.
A written out her head, yes. I mean, I think they all, they definitely are pertinent together. I certainly want her a part of the ELL conversation as well, since she's oversees that program. So, I mean, I certainly was expecting her to be at that meeting as well. Um, I I don't know. I'm I'm open to other committee members.
I would, I would like to see the June thirteenth meeting have the access presentation. Um, and the reason for that is it gives us more time to think about what we are concerned about and where we want to go for the eighteenth and the thirty-first. I always like to know in advance, if I can, um, what we have and where we're going.
Understood.
I I, it's not written in stone, so I'm open to other suggestions. If, Megan?
A clarifying question. Is there a health presentation? And then the access presentation uh is different. Those are two separate.
Yes, two separate.
Okay. In that case, it sounds like it would make sense to push the class size discussion to July eighteenth, if it, if there would still be time to adjust if necessary before the start of the school year.
Well, what does it, I mean, that comes to you, Dr. Leclerc. Are there, are there decisions on staffing that you're making before you leave around class sizes, correct?
Correct, but when we talk about class size, I think it's also important to consider um, the building that we're in. Um, for example, I only have five physical classrooms in grade four. And I have six fourth grades right now because of size. Because of the requests that you've made to keep the lower grades smaller. So one of my fourth grades is in the fifth grade hallway, which means I only have five classes in the fifth grade hallway right now. So I can't magically create another classroom. So if you want an extra classroom in fifth grade, that means something else has got to be jiggered around. And I I have five or six classrooms in each grade level. Um, so, you know, it might mean putting music on a cart or taking an art classroom. I I don't know. I will go over to Mountain View tomorrow and look at the projected plan if we need to add another classroom in fifth grade. If your direction is to keep class size small, then I've got to find a classroom for my extra fourth grade. So I don't know where that's going to go. So our our discussions last year were very focused on keeping numbers low at the youngest grades. And we went, we were at twenty-three students in five fifth grade classrooms this year. And that's what we're projected to have next year as well. So that might have ended, that might have been higher than what we had thought over the summer or last spring. But that's what we've had. That's the status quo that we've had this year. So I can go over to Mountain View and bring back some information for you. Um, we were adding a um, I'm trying to recall. Now, we're adding a sixth first grade next year. But we're decreasing a second grade. So I think that's a wash. Um, but I've got to look at the other, the other classrooms in those wings with the principals.
So my feeling is give you time to look at that. Look at the numbers, look at the projection of what you were planning. And let's have that meeting earlier, um, like June thirteenth. Because I think it's important that we give you time to look at it, not be trying to think about it off the top of your head. And then um, we look at it early on so that we can um, foresee any problems and and make any changes for the future. And I I think the sooner we know, the better. So I'm really pushing for that June thirteenth agenda. Okay, great. Sounds good. Okay.
What was the decision then on the access data and Julianne's presentation? Is that also on the?
I would like, yeah, I mean, it might be a slightly longer meeting, but I think it's an important meeting. The health presentation, the access and um, the class sizes. That gives us all the information we need.
Well, and elf presentation too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Hi. So, um, Megan? Your turn. Do we have matriculation?
I don't think that we do. Am I missing where those would be?
I am looking. Hold on one second. And I have none under there. So, um, I just wanted to verify that you didn't have something that that you had something and I didn't have it. So I checked. So we're not going to have any today. It will be on our next meeting. And we'll probably just have a slightly longer list. All right. That's pretty easy. So for our summer schedule, we are going to have, um, our next meeting is June thirteenth. Our first summer meeting is July eighteenth. Our second one will be July thirty-first. And our third one will be August twenty-second. That sounds good. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second Mearan's.
Okay, yeah, uh, Mearan made the motion to adjourn. Megan seconded. Mearan?
Yes, Mearan Goldstein, yes.
Mearla Chappell?
Mearla Chappell, yes.
Megan?
Megan Hermit, good night.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, good night. All right. Thank you. Good night, everybody.